This meeting is called to order. This is 5:30 PM, I'm sorry, 5:33 PM, Daytona Beach shores, city council chambers. What we're doing this evening is interviewing for our P and Z board. And we have in our chambers with us John Schmidt. John, would you like to stand up and come to the podium? First of all, before we get begin that, I want to thank you for your three years of service on the board, you know, taking time away from your family and voting it to the city. We greatly appreciate it.
Thank you.
And then normally there is 20 questions we ask on a candidate. But I was going to say, in your case, I know what an excellent job.
Since we started late, we'll just do three.
Yeah, well, okay. You know, in your case, I know what an excellent job you've done that they thought enough of you to elect you as the chairman. So I'm just going to have a couple of questions and then if anyone else has any, we'll go from there. Okay, so I just want to know, in your past three years, what do you think was your biggest accomplishment on the P and Z?
I think trying to make it more efficient for us to decide on issues. And part of that came from working with getting the developer agreements so that we knew the entire picture of what we were trying to improve, rather than just trying to dig it out of the plans.
Okay.
A lot of times, and I don't care about the financial part that much, but there were many things in there waving of this, changing this to that. And for the P and Z, the only thing we had was look at the plans and try and figure it out. At least when we got the developer agreement, we could then see, okay, these three things apply and we should, we should check for it. So I think that was a big step to us becoming more efficient at reviewing the plans and making a determination.
Okay, and refresh our memory, that only happened several months ago, right? So, okay.
Before that, we just dug through.
Okay, all right, good, good. Well, I'm glad that helped. And then, you know, on the flip side, what's the biggest obstacle that you've had to face these past three years on the board?
That's a good question. I would say when, the biggest one I can think of offhand was when we had a lot of people in chambers that were arguing against a certain issue. And we hadn't adopted the council's recommendation of the way they do it, which is three minutes per person.
Okay.
And while some of the members were saying, well, cut them off. I was going, well, I hate to do that when I don't have a limit. Because then it looks like I'm biased and I'm not giving them their fair share. But we have since that adopted the three minute rule.
Oh, you have adopted?
Yes.
All right, and then for that particular thing, it's a little bit different someone coming here. Is three minutes enough, or would you like to see five, or is your recommendation to stick with the three?
I think sticking with the three. We can always allow them to go a little over if they're making good points. But a lot of times, it's just repeating what another member has already said of the audience and that type of thing. So you could easily keep mostly within three.
Okay, good, good. So that's helped as well.
Yes.
Okay, and the last question I have, so these, if you are elected for the next three years, what, what would you like to accomplish in these next three years, or what other changes, what would you like to see in the P and Z board?
Can I be honest?
Sure, sure.
I'd like to see us go back to a five-member board. The more members you have, the harder it gets, the harder it gets to get everybody there. And while I know you cannot require that people on the alternates attend meetings, I kind of have trouble with that. When I was an alternate way back, I went to every meeting so I'd know what was going on in case I ever had to step up just because I was interested. The alternates now don't come unless
Unless they're told to come.
Because there'll be a vacancy that day. And I guess, I don't know if you can make alternates come, but it just seems like they really want to be part of the whole thing. Whether they're up there voting or down here listening, seems like they should still come.
I understand. And that was one of the things that we had discussed. Like that seven came about before, I don't want to say before we knew what was really happening, but it was more or less to appease another board that we did away with. In retrospect, we probably should have left it like it is. I'm hoping there'll be something coming up in a doc, in October, that we do something to address that. Naturally, we don't want to kick anyone off, but, but through attrition, I'm sure that we could do that, so.
I probably can't do anything about the alternate situation, correct?
I will check into that.
Well, I don't know if it's legal to ask them to come, but I'd like to.
Yeah, sure.
One of the things, John, I agree with you 100%. When I was on the board as an alternate first, I attended every meeting. And I think that when we question and interview people for the boards, we want to find out if they, if we appoint somebody an alternate, if they really are interested and really plan to attend as many meetings as possible. I think that's really important, because that's how you learn how this goes and the give and take and what you have to dig for and all that stuff.
To be able to step right in, have you been needed, and you know, referring back to like a director or jury, if you're an alternate, don't you have to be there every time in case something happens? You have to step in to know what's going on. So let me check to see, you know, what we can do about that. But to Mel's point, we can certainly, when we interview again, say the expectation is for an alternate that he would be there. Do you have a problem with that? So that's the only questions I have. Do you have anything you want to ask us before I ask the rest of the council?
No, I just want to tell you that I still enjoy it. Having been on the customer side of P and Z for a dozen projects and ones people never liked, because I was in the funeral and cemetery business. So I built crematories, cemeteries, funerals, and everybody says, oh, hell no, you can't do that. And so we've always had to fight all that battle. And I just think, I like being on that side, trying to help staff and developers get something through, rather than trying to be an obstacle to it.
Okay, all right. What other questions does anyone else have?
I just have a comment. I think we are so blessed and fortunate to have you as part of the P and Z board and as the chairman. I think we're all very, very fortunate and very, very lucky. And I really appreciate everything you've done.
Yeah, I second that, John. Thanks a lot for what you contribute to the city. It's an important job and we appreciate the work you do.
Thanks for trying to come back for three, three more years. Do you have?
Yeah, I'll start then.
Okay, good, all right.
Have you actually reviewed any development agreements yet?
Yes.
Which ones?
The last one that came through was.
Oceans 25?
No, that was already done.
109.
Shores.
109, okay. Okay, what, what do you, I'll just ask you, because I'm not real familiar with it. What, what do you look at when you're looking at the development plan to make sure it matches what our land development is? Or what are you taking to go through? Oh, by the way, the interview's over, this is just.
Yeah, staff, staff goes through and gives us a complete list, a checklist of, we think this is, play this play. So you.
Thank you, everyone. I'm calling to order the September 22nd, 2020 Daytona Beach shores city council meeting. Sherri, can you take a roll, please?
Mary Miller?
Here.
Yeah.
Here.
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 Thank you, Sherri. Before we get started, I'm going to explain the format of the meeting again. Again, this will be a hybrid meeting, so we do have people in chambers socially distanced. And we do have residents online on Zoom. Just to let you know that if you have already not forwarded a comment to the city manager, there will be a time during public comments, as well as if you want to do the chat session and our IT manager will let us know that there is a question on hand. Hopefully, I said this the last meeting, but hopefully this will be our last hybrid meeting. We are in the process of having an online system that we were told October 3rd. So hopefully that will be a next time for our October 13th meeting, that this will be the last Zoom. I know you'll miss it. If I could ask everyone on the council, I got a lot of feedback that they, especially with the masks, could not hear us. So if you could move your microphone as close to possible to your mouth and speak into it, I'm sure everyone would appreciate it. Before I call Reverend Melissa up, I just wanted to say how humbled I was to see our city staff, city flags at half-staff, in unison with our state and with our federal in respect and honor of Supreme Court Justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg. Could you please give a moment of silence to honor her memory? She was an extraordinary woman, so accomplished and did so much in her life and on the Supreme Court. So if we could have a moment of silence, please.
Thank you very much. Reverend Melissa, can you come up now, please, to lead us in the prayer? Will you all join me in an attitute of prayer? Holy Creator, we thank you for the many blessings that the city of Daytona Beach shores has. We pray for those who serve in the offices that govern this city and ask for your guidance as they work to make wise decisions and that those decisions would be made in the best interests of our entire community. We give you thanks that we each have the freedom to speak up and to cast our vote. Even if our opinions differ from these leaders, we pray for them to be blessed by you. We also lift up those who serve this city as a member of our Department of Public Safety. Please protect them in the line of duty as they seek to protect each of us who have placed our trust in them. I ask for your blessings upon these and all of the men and women who serve in leadership roles here in the city of Daytona Beach shores. We are so thankful for them and the work that they do. It is in your holy name that we pray. Amen.
Reverend Melissa, I want to tell you what an honor has been to have you these past couple of months. Thank you so much for coming. You and your church have been such a good partner. And can you do thus the honor of leading us in the pleas allegiance?
Sure.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay, now we are going into our final millage rate public hearing. So please call up the item to adopt fiscal year 2020, 2021 final millage rates and say it is now a public hearing. Finance Director Swartzlander, can you come up, please? Can you provide us with anything on that here? Any background?
Yes. Can you hear me all right?
I can hear you. Can everyone else hear the director? Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Unfortunately, as you're all aware, we're going to have to recess these items tonight and hold the hearing on Friday. The News Journal, we have trim requirements where we have to run a notice of budget hearing and a budget summary ad, and there's certain state requirements. And the News Journal didn't meet those requirements. And what they did was they ran our two ads on separate pages. They're supposed to be adjacent to each other on the same page. They knew that, it was, I always send a letter. The sales folks even sent it to the layout department, but the layout department apparently decided to do their own thing and separated our ads. So unfortunately, we have to rerun the ads. They're doing it at no charge, but it'll be a continuation notice with a hearing at 5:01 on Friday. So, but as far as the actual items itself, these are the same ones you saw at the September 9th meeting. The millage rates are 5.046 and 1.7350. No changes there. Same thing will be for the budget item. We have to do it as two separate resolutions. No changes from the budget you saw on the 9th as well. So if there's any questions, but we do have to give the public an opportunity tonight because it was advertised to speak if they so choose.
Okay, so now I will open the public hearing on fiscal year 2020, 2021 final millage rate. Do you have anyone that would like to speak on this? Okay, seeing no one, this hearing is to establish the tentative millage rate of 5.0476 mils, which is the rolled back tax rate, and that this resolution also establishes the final millage rate for the voted debt of 1.7350 units. Do I have any other public comment? Okay, if not, we'll close the public comment and attorney, though, so you on?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Okay, thank you very much. Could you? Yes, I can hear you now. I can hear you now. Could you read the entirety of the final millage rate level resolution number 2020-11?
Yes, this is resolution 2020-11, a resolution of the city of Daytona Beach shores, Volusia County, Florida, adopting the final levying of average room taxes for the city of Daytona Beach shores, Volusia County, for the fiscal year 2020 through 2021 and providing for an effective date. City of Daytona Beach shores, county Florida, on September 23rd, 2020, fiscal year 2020, 2021, final flood rate. For the year 2021, Florida statute, 200.061. And for the city of Daytona Beach shores, Volusia County, Florida, public hearing as required by the statute. And for as the gross taxable value for operating purposes. Certified by the county property appraiser of the city of Daytona Beach shores at 725, 535. Say that again. 1 billion 75 million. 1 billion 700,000, 5 million 78 dollars. Section 1, operating mileage. The fiscal year. Section 1, operating mileage. The fiscal year. Operating mileage is 5.0476. Operating mileage is 5.0476. Section 2, debt service. Elegance, the voted. Section 2, debt service. Elegance, the voted. 500 mils. Is 1.7 effective days. 500 mils. Make effective. 3 effective days. The city. Duly adopted. The city. Day of September. Day of September.
Okay, thank you. And somehow you are cutting out, so when we do the next one, I don't know, I'll ask Dave to see if there's something we can do, attorney.
Should.
And as Director Swartzlander has. Excuse me, one moment, Dave. Should she call, I'm sorry. Okay, it's your connectivity. So again, as Director Swartzlander has stated, due to a publication error by the News Journal, we cannot vote on this item at this time. This public hearing will be recessed until Friday, September 25th, 2020, at 5:01 PM in the city council chambers. May I have a motion to recess the public hearing until Friday, September 25th, 2020, at 5:01 PM in city council chambers?
I'll move.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
We will be able to attend that virtually, won't we? As council, all we're going to do is vote on it, right?
I guess I believe, is it going to be a Zoom meeting, or does everyone have to be in? One moment, please. I'm sorry.
Here.
Everyone has to be here, all of council? Okay, yes. Okay, any, any more discussion?
It's a public meeting, right?
Yes.
So the audience, the public can attend.
Correct.
As a.
Yes, the public can attend.
But as a, I mean, they can attend virtually, right?
The public can attend. You will have it available on Zoom, David?
No.
No? Okay, we will not have it on Zoom, so you will need to be in the chambers.
And I'd like to point out, just so people understand what the rollback rate means. It means no tax increase, and we made the front page of the Hometown News, no tax increase in Daytona Beach shores.
Thank you, yay. Thank you. And again, you know, I thank everyone, thank you, our staff, thank you for our fantastic city council that we worked diligently on that. I, I don't know if it was in there or not, but I did see that some cities were as high as a 10% that we're going to, Port Orange, and a lot of them in Volusia County went up. So I'm very, very happy that we were not only went to the 5.73 as we originally thought, but to the 5.04. So thank you again to everyone, appreciate it. Any other comment? If not, Sherri, can you take the vote, please?
House of Linda?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brian?
Yes.
House Member Plius?
Yes.
House Member Frislow?
Yes.
Mary Miller?
Yes. Okay, the second item on here would have been the final budget public hearing. So please call up item to adopt fiscal year 2020-21 final budget stating it is a public hearing. Director Swartzlander, do you have anything to add, or we, okay, all right. So I'm going to now open the public hearing on the fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget. This hearing is to adopt the fiscal year 2020, 21 budget. At this time, I will allow any public comment, anyone that would like to speak that's in chamber. And David, do we have anyone online that would like to talk about this issue? Thank you. Okay, seeing no comments or hearing no comments, I'm going to close the public comment. And Attorney Voss, I'm going to ask you read the title of the final budget resolution 2020-12, please.
This is resolution 2020-12, a resolution of the city of Daytona Beach shores, Volusia County, Florida, adopting the final budget for fiscal year 2020-2021 and providing for an effective date. And providing for an effective date.
Thank you, attorney. We could hear you a lot better that time. And can I have a motion, please, to recess the public hearing until Friday, September 25th, 2020, at 5:01 in city council chambers?
So move.
Thank you. Thank you. And do we have any discussion on this?
I'd just like to make a comment on the previous. It's actually a tax decrease when you consider real dollars. Because a dollar next year is not worth the same as a dollar last year. So in real terms, in terms of real dollars, it's actually a tax decrease.
Great, thank you for pointing that out. Any other comment? If not, Sherri, can you take a roll, please?
House of Linda?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brian?
Yes.
House Member Plius?
Yes.
House of Frislow?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. We do not have any presentations or public notices today. So we'll go on to the approval of the minutes of September 9th, 2020. Do I hear a motion to accept those minutes?
I'll move to accept the minutes.
Thank you. Thank you. Any comment on those minutes? If not, Sherri, can you take the role, please?
House Member Plius?
Yes.
House Member Linda?
Yes.
House Member Frislow?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brian?
Yes.
Mary Miller?
Yes, thank you. Now we move on to the consent agenda. Four items on that consent agenda, do I hear a motion to accept those items?
Motion to accept. I'll second.
Thank you. Any comment? Okay, if not, Sherri, can you please take a roll?
House Member Frislow?
Yes.
House Member Plius?
Yes.
House of Linda?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brian?
Yes.
Mary Miller?
Yes. Okay, next, can we have the report of the newly married city? Oh, no, not you, not you, Becky, I'm sorry, rushing it, sorry, city attorney report, please. I rushed it.
Okay, yes, I, I've been married a long time, anyway. All right, this is a report of matters that we've been working on since last meeting. We've continued to advise the code enforcement department on procedures including an in-person meeting with the code enforcement coordinator. And we have reviewed and approved an economic development grant. We have reviewed and approved an economic development agreement for straws. We have edited and approved the order of protection of land of the city council. 2020 city council. And we worked with the Volusia lander on the resolution.
Thank you, Attorney Voss. Do I have any questions for our city attorney? Okay, if not, we go on to the newly married city manager. What do you have for us this evening?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Under recreation, construction of our sixth tennis court is underway. Actually, it's well underway at this point. Barring any major interruption in the work, it will be ready for play when our snowbirds arrive and hopefully sooner than that. Beginning in October, the community center will be returning Silver Sneakers programs and trying to get back to normal gradually with some of our other programs such as Zumba. IT, David Lockwood is working to enable the live streaming of city council meetings, and hopefully we can do that within the next few weeks. Under personnel, a few months ago, someone brought to the city council's attention that the city of Daytona Beach shores expensed 37% of its budget on salaries and benefits. In doing so, they intimated that this was a high percentage and way out of line compared to other selected few cities that they chose to use. Attached are two tables. One of somewhat comparable cities to Daytona Beach shores, either in size, population, or coastal status, and another of Volusia County cities. Daytona Beach shores is the seventh lowest percentage of budget of the 24 comparable cities. Likewise, Daytona Beach shores is right in the middle of the cities of Volusia County. Now, that was my regular report, Madam Mayor, but unfortunately, we had something come in late Friday that we could not get on the agenda, and I usually don't like to do this. We have a fifth amendment between the city of Daytona Beach shores and the county of Volusia regarding the provision of fire suppression services. It is actually a two-year contract. If you want to come up to the podium, Director, to mention this. It's a two-year contract whereby the county will pay us $65,000 a year, which is roughly the cost that it cost us to service those areas in the course of a year. Well, part, I mean, you can't obviously predict how many fires you're going to have. But in general, this, this amount, I think, is fair to the city and to the county. Would you like to add anything?
It's, it's a two-year contract. We do it basically to be good neighbors, because the county Volusia has no fire service at all on the beachside. And they negotiated this amendment, they. It's tough getting them to agree to pay anything, but, but I think we got a very fair contract and I don't think it costs the city, it's not going to cost us money to do this, and, and we can service them. We service Wilbur, all the peninsula here, and all the areas that are unincorporated that are not Daytona Beach or Port Orange. So it's a good contract. I'm sorry it came in so late. It's very difficult dealing with Volusia County. It took a lot of negotiations, but Mike and I managed to, to get it done, and it's a fair price. It's a two-year contract.
And the, the existing agreement, I should point out, runs out at the end of September Right. this year, which is why it's on this agenda for approval by council. But it's really not on the agenda. Someone from council has to place it on the agenda, and if you would do that, then we can vote on this item.
I'll place it on the agenda. I moved, I moved to place it on the agenda.
I'll second it.
Okay, now that it's on the agenda, then we. What, I'm sorry. Okay, all right. Any questions before we take a vote?
I have one quick question. How does this compare? Do we have a two-year contract before?
Yes, as a matter of fact, it was, it was, it was for $50,000. Now it's for 65.
55?
It was for, I'm sorry, it was for 5-0 the last time, now it's for 65.
Oh, 65.
Yeah.
Okay.
They, they negotiated fairly this time.
Okay.
And I shouldn't knock the county, I'm sorry.
And Vice Mayor, will you make sure you're talking right into your mic? I got to know that they can, okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
No, just a comment. I think it's absolutely phenomenal, a feather in the Daytona Beach shores cap, but more importantly, you and your fellow public safety officers. So congratulations, and getting money out of Volusia County is not an easy thing. This isn't true.
Thank you.
You have to pull your gun.
Okay, can we take a vote now?
Vice Mayor Brian?
Yes.
House of Linda?
Yes.
House Member Plius?
Yes.
House Member Frislow?
Yes.
Mary Miller?
Yes. Okay, thank you.
One additional item, Madam Mayor, it's not to vote on, but we received word today, actually, finally. It's not to vote on, but we received word today, actually Finance Director Schwartzland received word from the USTA that we will be receiving a $20,000 grant for the new tennis court. And I want to thank Kurt, I want to thank Lori for all the hard work they did, and I want to thank Councilmember Friselow for pulling some strings behind the scenes to help us get that money.
Okay, great.
That's excellent news.
Okay, great, thank you. And I know it's hard to qualify for that. So thank you, Lori, I know you put a lot of work into that. And I just wanted to add on that, I know, again, about the Halifax Urgent Care. Mike and I had a call this past week with Bill Griffin again, and it's still going ahead. There's just some internal labor and bids that they're working on, and we keep on him to make sure that it doesn't fall through the cracks. So we can assure you it's still going to happen. When that's going to be, the last he told us was beginning of next summer, that we'll be open and ready. So just to let you know that it's still in the works, and thank you, Mike, for partnering with me on that.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions on the budget for the tennis and bocce ball.
For the what, I'm sorry?
The tennis and bocce ball.
Okay.
If I remember correctly, I don't have the numbers in front, it was like 130-some-thousand in the budget. Is that the right number, Kurt?
I think it was closer to around 130 to 140.
Yeah, in that range. Does the $20,000 subtract from that number, first of all?
Well, on the tennis courts, is this on? Okay. On the tennis court portion, the grant only goes to the tennis courts. It has nothing to do with bocce. But we budgeted that amount, plus we'll apply the 20,000 towards those expenses for the tennis court, and then the budget will absorb the remainder.
Yeah, so the 130,000 wasn't planning on a grant. The grant would reduce that number if it were an accurate estimate.
Correct.
Okay. And we've already spent something like 22,000, if I remember correctly.
That neighborhood, yeah.
Yeah. And is that basically for the bocce ball court that we've already, part of it that was already built?
Yes, because all we did on the other was, we did that in-house.
And Mike, I know it's minor, but does that also, that 130 includes the shuffleboard?
Yes.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, any other questions for our city manager? If not, we're going to move on to old business, and this would be ordinance 2020-10, Amendment to the Shores 109 LLC, City of Daytona Beach Shores Development Agreement. We had a first reading on that last meeting, but if there's no questions on it, Attorney Voss, can you read that for us, please?
Yes, this is ordinance 2020-10, an ordinance of the City of Daytona Beach Shores, Florida, relating to approval of amendment to the Shores 109 LLC, City of Daytona Beach Shores Development Agreement, pertaining to property located at 109 Dunlott Boulevard in accordance with the provisions of the Florida Local Government Development Agreement Act, as set for section 163.3220 through 163.2434, the statute providing for implementing administrative action, providing for conflict, providing for a savings provision in the effect of the ordinance, providing for separability, providing for noncodification, as well as correction of scrivener's errors, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Attorney. Mr. Cruz, can you come up a minute? Okay, I know we talked about this in detail last meeting, but for those of the, in the chambers on Zoom, can you just give us a brief overview?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. For the record, my name is Stuart Cruz, City Planner with the City of Daytona Beach Shores. This is the second reading of ordinance 2020-10. If this ordinance is adopted, it will amend the existing development agreement that the city has with Shores 109 LLC. So as you may recall, we have an existing development agreement to redevelop the property at 109 Dunlott Boulevard for the development of a restaurant. That property has been basically abandoned from a commercial use standpoint since 2004. If this amendment occurs tonight, it will enable the property owner to go ahead and redevelop the property into a restaurant use. He hasn't identified a tenant as yet. What he hopes to do is to build out the property first, and then advertise and interview tenants to go into the space. The city is contributing $57,500 towards this, and the reason for that is because there are two easements that the city needs in order for this redevelopment to happen and to provide services in terms of sewer for the neighborhood and public access to the neighbors on the backside of the alley that's adjacent to the property. Staff is recommending approval of this particular ordinance.
Thank you. And our understanding is it was just a little bit of a downsize when we originally.
Correct. The purpose of the amendment is because over time, unfortunately, the cost of construction has gone up, and so the property owner has had to scale back just a little bit in terms of the scope of the project. So for example, the outdoor, the covered outdoor patio has been reduced by half, and some of the parking, as a result, has also been reduced. He's changed from underground exfiltration stormwater system to a surface retention system, which is obviously cheaper as well. Those are the major changes.
Thank you for the explanation. Do I hear a motion to approve ordinance 2020-10?
I second it.
Thank you. Any further discussion or any questions for our city planner? If not, Sherri, can you take a roll?
House Member Plius?
Yes.
House Member Lindauer?
Yes.
House Member Friselow?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bryan?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Okay, next, under new business, we have ordinance 2020-12, Land Development Code Amendment relating to the expansion of nonconforming single-family residency structures. Attorney Voss, can you read that for us, please?
Yes, this is ordinance 2020-12, an ordinance of the City of Daytona Beach Shores, Florida, relating to nonconforming single-family residential use structures. Amending the code of ordinances of the appendix G Land Development Code by amending section 14, Act 11, entitled Titling of Nonconforming Status, will allow the limited expansion of nonconforming single-family residential uses in some cities with a high intensity future land use classification, providing for enforcement and penalties, providing for a savings provision, providing for codification, providing for conflicting ordinances, providing for separability, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Attorney. And City Planner Cruz, can you explain what this is?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You may recall that the city is in the process of amending its comprehensive plan to essentially allow nonconforming, single-family residential structures on the beachside to expand that use and the structure within the existing both, within the existing footprint of the building and up to the existing height of the roof structure, the highest point of the roof structure. So the comprehensive plan amendment is the first stage. The second stage to implement the policy that is in the comprehensive plan is the Land Development Code Amendment. So section 14, chapter 14 of the city's Land Development Code will essentially implement the changes that are being undertaken by the city. So just a quick update, Madam Mayor, the comprehensive plan is being reviewed by the state and the BGMC, and the city expects approval of those, of that comprehensive plan amendment, October 3rd of this year. So on October 15th, we'll bring forward this ordinance, if it's approved tonight, for second reading, and we'll also bring forward the second reading of the comprehensive plan amendment ordinance. And just for perspective and context, this all came about as a result of an application that was made by Mr. Banker last year when he wanted to expand his single-family, nonconforming structure on the beachside.
Okay, and for clarification, we discussed the first part of it a couple of meetings ago, and then this is the second that we're approving.
This is the second tier of the changes that have to be done.
I just want to make sure I'm what's done. Okay, thank you. Do I hear a motion to approve 20? Thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion on this?
I would just like to point out to the residents who are not aware, we are not approving either a height increase or a width increase. This is within the building's present width and height.
In a single family.
For single family, nonconforming, single-family properties, correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other discussion? Not Sherri, can you take a roll, please?
House Member Friselow?
Yes.
House Member Plius?
Yes.
House Member Lindauer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bryan?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Director Schwartzlinger, can you call it, please? Okay, first of all, Attorney Voss, can you read Resolution 2020-13 to us, please?
Yes, this is Resolution 2020-13, a resolution of the City of Daytona Beach Shores, Volusia County, authorizing prepayment of certain outstanding debt, dedicating authorized personnel and providing for effective date.
Thank you, Attorney. Director?
Good evening again, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The resolution before you tonight is a requirement of Bank of America in order to pay off the debt. They want proof basically that the council is telling staff to go ahead and pay these debts off in advance. So they reviewed it and approved this resolution. Our QIR has reviewed it and approved this resolution. The attorney has reviewed it. It basically allows the city manager or his designee to go ahead and pay these loans off when the money is available. So if you approve this resolution tonight, we will be paying off the big, the biggest or the longest-running loan, either Monday or Tuesday. We haven't confirmed that date yet, but, so we will, we're rolling on this debt payoff. The other two will be next fiscal year, because we still have to collect that certain portion of taxes during next year, and then we would pay those off in full at some point when we've collected the majority of taxes.
Okay, thank you. I'm sure our residents are very, very pleased to know not only were we able to lower the mileage rate that we're working on, you know, making us within the end of 2021 to be debt-free. So thank you for all your work on that. So do I hear a motion to adopt this Resolution 2020-13?
I move to adopt it.
I'll second it.
Thank you. All right, do we have any discussion on this?
No, I think it's important, the point that you just made, though, that even though we're paying off this debt way ahead of time, we did not raise the taxes at all to do this. So I think it's a major achievement by the entire team to pull this off.
Well, again, I'd like to thank staff and our city council here for working together to be able to do this. I mean, I don't know when, you know, if you look at any other city, are they paying off their debt and are they lowering your taxes? So again, thank you, staff, thank you, council, appreciate it. And any other discussion? If not, Sherri, can you take a roll?
Vice Mayor Bryan?
Yes.
House Member Lindauer?
Yes.
House Member Plius?
Yes.
House Member Friselow?
Yes.
Mayor Miller?
Yes, thank you. Okay, and next, today we had an opening on the, not really an opening, it was on our P&amp;Z staff, someone whose term was up, so we interviewed them to come back on there. And I'm very, I'm sorry. Oh, sorry, moving right along there. I'm sorry, okay. Economic, thank you, Sherri, economic development grant application 1202-025, Smith &amp; Juice LLC, Go Juice. Thanks.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So the city received the Smith &amp; Juice LLC Economic Development Grant Application on August 25th this year. They are applying for a new business lease subsidy grant total in amount of $11,800 over the course of three years. The proposed location is at 3348 South Lake Avenue, Unit A. The applicant is hoping to open a Go Juice business at this particular location. As you may have seen in the staff report, board member, city council members, the Go Juice franchise concept first originated in Costa Rica, of all places. And Go Juice essentially sells made-to-order juices, smoothies, and something called Juice Bowl, Smoothie Bowls, a concept that I was not familiar with, but apparently it's really healthy. The franchise will target locals, tourists, and working professionals in the area as well. So the applicant is hoping to build out the interior of this particular site and particular space, and has signed a five-year lease with the landlord. They are hoping and targeting January 1st to open, but if things go smoothly, they will be able to open before that, or before then, I should say. Staff is recommending approval, and the Economic Development Committee has reviewed this application, and they are unanimously recommending approval as well. Any questions for staff?
Any questions about it? Councilman Friselow, you probably know most about this.
Yes, we've met with the individuals, and they are very, very exciting entrepreneurs. I think it's a great thing for the city. They are in several locations in Florida, and they're bringing the concept that they can franchise, and I think, given our beach traffic and our residents' excitement over having the ability to go and get a smoothie and get something healthy, I think they'll be very, very successful. I think it's a wonderful addition to the shores.
May I ask you, is this the one, there's one in New Smyrna?
Correct.
Okay, all right, I've heard a lot of good things.
St. Augustine as well, several locations, and they're wildly, and in Ormond as well, and they're wildly successful.
Okay. Any questions about this? Do I hear a motion to approve the subject grant application?
Motion to approve subject grant application. I'll second it. Oh, go ahead.
Any questions? Any discussion? If not, Sherri, can you take a vote?
I'm sorry, who made the motion?
Rick Friselow.
My computer was updating. House Member Friselow?
Yes.
House Member Plius?
Yes.
House Member Lindauer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bryan?
Yes.
Mayor Miller?
Yes, thank you. All right, thank you, Sherri. Now we'll go on to item number D, Board Member John Smith. His term is up for reappointment, and do I hear a motion?
I move that we appoint John Smith.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion? The only discussion that I have, and we had passed this on to Mr. Smith, thank you very much for serving our community. I know sometimes it's a thankless job. We appreciate you, Tony, and everyone, you know, that wants to take the time, Chuck, to be on a committee like that. So thank you again for coming back for a little bit more. We appreciate it. Okay, any other discussion? If not, Sherri, can you take a roll?
Vice Mayor Bryan?
Yes.
House Member Lindauer?
Yes.
House Member Plius?
Yes.
House Member Friselow?
Yes.
Mayor Miller?
Yes, thank you. Next, we're going to have a discussion on issuing an RFP for the sale of 136 Beachcomber property. We talked about this about nine months ago, so this is the property that's at the intersection of Atlantic and Beachcomber. I believe the wow factor is in there, a hairdresser and a pet grooming. There's also the saving shop, but that is not owned by the city. So that's the property that we're talking about. And recently, the city has received multiple offers for the purchase of the city-owned and located at 136 Beachcomber. So we are proposing to issue a formal RFP, request for proposal, on the sale of this facility, and we would like, right now, just a discussion from our city council. So would anyone like to start a discussion on it?
Has this property been appraised recently?
It wasn't. It was about six months ago we got the appraisal, is that correct, city manager? Maybe a year ago?
I was going to say, I think it was a little longer than that, Madam Mayor.
Yeah, if I can interject. It was, this was a property that last September 9th, we approved a contract for sale on, and we had an appraisal done before that, and it was a $300,000 appraised value. We had a contract, they ended up backing out of the contract, and since then, we've had a couple other offers just come in kind of out of the blue. And about a month ago, we were, well, staff was kind of reviewing those two offers we had, and then COVID kind of hit us, and so we kind of put it on hold. And then about a month ago, we had somebody else approach the city wanting to make another offer, and as staff, we discussed and said, at this point, let's, if council wants to, why don't we do a formal RFP to give everybody a fair, clean shot rather than fielding offers one at a time? Part of the issue with that is if you field them one at a time, the first offer becomes public record for the second person to see, and then now the third person can ask for those first two offers versus an RFP, you open them all on the same day and go with those first two offers versus an RFP, you open them all on the same day and go with the one council would feel best suits the needs of the city.
Or, or if not acceptable, you could reject all offers.
Correct.
All right, any questions?
Will we put restrictions on the use of the property in the RFP?
I believe those restrictions would fall under our existing zoning code. I'll look to Fred and Stuart for confirmation, yes.
We'll, we'll make it explicit in the RFP for people that maybe don't
Yes.
understand it.
And, and if you choose to do this tonight, I'll work with the city attorney to craft an RFP for this. This land sales is not my area of expertise, but I'm sure the attorney has dealt with something similar to this in the past.
And that'll put it back on the tax rolls, too, right?
Correct.
Right. Okay, any other comment on this?
I definitely think this is the way to do it, as opposed to just, you know, informally with them one at a time.
Makes sense.
Okay, if there's no, no other discussion, Director Swartzlinger, did you need anything from else except a consent? Do you need a vote, or, okay. Councilman Plaitus, how are you feeling about this? I mean, do we need a formal vote?
You know, I think, I think, you know, I think the RFP is, is the right way to go, because I think it's fair, there's no perception that something's going on underhandedly or just someone has connections, and I think you'll probably get the best and fairest price for the, for the city. But now they'll start preparing the RFP, bring it back to us, and then we're gonna go ahead and approve it. So there's probably nothing we have to do today.
Okay, and I, I know you've already, and, you know, and, yeah, I'm all for it, too, so. Okay, well, I think you have your consensus here, thank you very much. Okay, council remarks, is there any council remarks I want to hear this evening? Vice Mayor, do you?
Yeah, I have, on the paying off the debt, I, I gave Kurt three questions, and he in turn asked Bank of America, related to whether we can pay off the underlying debt without paying off the
I'm, I'm sorry, Richard, they can't hear you in the back, so maybe, yeah, okay.
Is that better?
Thank you.
He asked those three questions of the Bank of America, and the bottom line, he probably needs to go back and double-check based on our previous experience, but if those answers hold, the one we're paying off right away, we can't separate the two, we can't pay off the underlying debt. The other two, we have the option of paying off the underlying debt and not paying off the swaps. And I think Kurt and I currently agree that the ballpark savings of doing that is in the ballpark of $40,000, which includes the savings, we, we don't have to have a QIR for those, those other two swaps if we let them run to completion. So, you know, $40,000 is a lot less than $800,000, but it's not chicken feed. So I would suggest we maybe have a consensus, just to ask Kurt, it's not something that's really urgent, because he's, you know, he's not going to be spending the money until probably after the first of the year, since we won't have collected the taxes. But I think we ought to seriously consider this, and maybe ask Kurt to refine those calculations, make sure that Bank of America has given us their correct answer, and then we can consider it at some council, future council meeting, which, you know, hopefully in the next month or two.
I, I'm not understanding, I thi- I think we had come to the consensus that we wanted to pay out all this debt. We understand we're not going to have the $800,000 savings. I'm not sure, what are we asking our director to do?
Well, tonight, we gave him permission to pay off all the debt. That doesn't preclude, if we want him, if we have the opportunity to save the taxpayers $40,000, we ought at least consider that. What we passed tonight doesn't bind Kurt to do that, we can, we can actually
But I'm confused, because according to Kurt, we're gonna pay off two of the swaps, let me have the two of the swaps on either Monday or Tuesday.
No, one.
One of the swaps, Monday or Tuesday.
And that's the one we couldn't, we couldn't do that, we couldn't, that one, the two, the swaps and the underlying debt are tied, so we're not talking about that one. He's gonna go ahead and do that. It's the other two that we have the option of paying off the underlying debt and not paying off the swaps. And if we do that, ballpark, we probably can save about $40,000.
But we would continue with the debt to the city, is that correct?
Correct.
Not, not the, not the major part.
Right. Currently, the plan is to pay off everything in, basically in the next 12 months.
Correct.
More likely, it's going to be eight to nine months. If we do what Vice Mayor Bryan is proposing, we would still continue to pay the swap portion to term on these, the debt. So that would take us out to 2023 and 2024. So if it saves, and, and I can't disagree with the, the, the number in any way, we're in the ballpark, 35,000 to 40,000 on an estimate, that's 35,000 to 40,000 over four years, that's $10,000 a year, is it, is that savings, what the council wants, or do you want to pay off the debt?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm at the feeling right now that, you know, if we're gonna pay off the debt, let's pay off the debt. From all of the residents I'm talking to, they would love to be able to go into 2022 with no debt to the city. You know, I understand the point, you know, the $40,000, but we don't know what 2021, 22 is going to bring. I, I would just love to be able to be debt-free.
I, I completely agree. I don't think it's, I, I don't think it behooves us to wait till 2024 and, and drag out the debt. I, I, I think we're very fortunate to be in this position. I think that Kurt and, and City Manager Booker have looked at this, and I, I totally agree with the mayor, I think we should move forward and, and stick to our plan.
Well, I wasn't proposing we make the decision tonight. We would be paying off more than 90% of the debt. So, you know.
I, I think we're grasping, look, it's just my opinion, I'm just one vote here, but I think we're grasping at straws. I think the mayor's made a very, very good point, but let's be debt-free, I mean, we are so very blessed to be completely debt-free, plus do rollback on taxes. I think the residents are, are, gotta be excited by this, and I think we should just stick to our plan.
I agree, because any, any amount of debt, no matter how low it is, is still debt.
It's debt, debt is debt.
I have a question, was it ever determined if we had legal recourse against Bank of America for the misstatement telling us that we were going to save $100,000?
I believe Attorney Carey addressed that last time, but I'll, I'll turn that to Attorney Voss, but I believe because we didn't have a financial hardship, you know, it was something we thought we were going to get, but it didn't come back. But Attorney Voss, could you elaborate on that, please?
We did not act in reliance upon, we did not act in reliance of misinformation that they gave us to our financial detriment. So as a result, we don't really have a cause of action, because we don't have any financial blame. We don't have any financial blame.
But at least we found out that we, we followed up to check whether we did or not, and we don't.
Yes.
Is that the bottom line?
Yes, yes, I did, and I also tried to get them to back off on some of their fees and that sort of thing, but these didn't actually go to the bank, the fee went to the investors. So that was a dead end, too. So that was a dead end, too.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anything else, Vice Mayor?
No, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Lindar?
No, I'm, I'm looking more.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Plaitus?
No.
Hey, Councilman Frisellone?
I'm fine.
Okay, I don't know, Nancy Maddox, do you know the answer to this, or Chase Bank, next door, do you know, is it first or second week in October they're looking to open? Second? Okay. At one time, we were planning on, they had wanted to have a grand opening and a ribbon cutting and all of that, and with COVID, along with everything else, you know, they won't be doing that, but they're going to be a welcome partner, we're very, very happy to have them here. If there's anyone online, you know, welcome Chase Bank, we appreciate that. The only other thing that I want to talk about is we're continuing our concerts at the end of the month, so we will be having this one Friday night, do you know who, six, I was, end of summer? Endless summer. Okay, thank you.
I did talk to one of the people from Chase Bank in Port Orange, and he told me that they do plan to have a celebration once this is all over.
Okay, great, great, as everyone else, we're going to be jam-packed. Mayor Jennings, did you have a comment you wanted to make?
Can I address council, please?
Yes, you can. Again, just state your name and address, and then, you know the rules, fill out the form when you're done.
Harry Jennings, Three Oceans West Boulevard. Let me applaud the council and the staff on the movement for the debt reduction, I think that's just terrific, and each of you are to be congratulated, and now I'd like to plant a seed. This gives, in my opinion, a great opportunity for the city to go back to these enclaves that we've been talking to for years and years about annexing into the city, because, particularly those who live in the county, because the county's going to increase their taxes, they are not as disciplined financially as we are. So this might give us an opportunity to talk to those people, to say, look, you enjoy our concerts, how about helping us, you know, pay some of our taxes and come join, you know, the family? But that's step one, but step two is you must have a good group of people to do this, people who are very well-versed with knowledge of the city and who can sell people. That's all I want to say.
Do I hear, do I hear you volunteering?
Congratulations on a good job, because this is, you know, it's, it's great.
Do I hear you volunteering, Harry?
Helen won't allow me.
Likely excuse.
Yeah, I mean, I just think it's a great opportunity. What you've done is created another opportunity for us here in the shores, and it's so difficult to annex people because we have to seek permission from the county, but if they self-annex, it's entirely different, so, thanks.
Okay, if there's no other council, oh, I'm sorry, all right, I, you know what, if there's no other council comments, I think we're ready to move on to audience.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make one more comment on a different subject, if I might. The, we have a budget item for trying to mitigate aerosol transmission of COVID virus, and I was talking to Fred before the meeting, and we don't have any data that the, the current plan of putting ultraviolet light inside the air conditioning system, whether that really kills the virus or not. I'm not saying it does or doesn't, I'm just saying we don't have information either way. And I think before we spend the money, even though we're, we're getting reimbursed by the federal government, we, we should make sure that whatever we do is going to be effective in killing the virus. There are some alternatives, like air purifiers, that data I've seen say that they, they probably do work to some extent. The problem with ultraviolet in the air conditioning system is the air goes by pretty fast, and it may not provide enough exposure to actually kill the virus. And so we should, we should actually demand some data, and if it doesn't exist, we need to, you know, and we should look at some alternatives to it, too. Just because it's federal money doesn't mean we should spend it on something that's not effective.
Do you have a response to that?
One issue that we have right now is, we've actually already issued purchase orders for that, for that equipment, and it is on order now, it's going to be a while before it gets here, but it's, we have entered into a contract on those devices, and, and we've submitted that budget to the county as well.
And that's reimbursable to, by the federal government, back to us?
Yes. Yeah, I, I say we, we did it through the county, it's federal money, but the county is managing it.
Is this part of the CARES Act?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Okay. All right, are we done with the council comments? Okay, now we're ready for audience. And as always, fill out your form.
Tony Remazewski, Four Oceans West Boulevard, Cloverde East North. My concern, we're talking about banks, we're losing banks in this, our little city here. I think SunTrust is closed, what's the other one? Wells Fargo's closed, Bank of America. The other day, I accident, oh, well, accident, accidentally drove around the back of Bank of America, and I'm starting to see it's deteriorating back there. I don't know if their ATMs are open or what it isn't open, but what are we looking down the road? Are these going to become eyesore? I know Wells Fargo, nothing, nothing's happening there, that, that bank's been closed, and the other part of it is, it's caused, the Bank of America has caused a great inconvenience for us as customers. I'm a customer of Bank of America, I have to go over the bridge if I got to do any banking business, which today, you know, there's not that much, you know, we could do it online, but we have to go over to Nova. All the staff that was working at our branch here is over there, and they tell me, it ain't coming back. So what's going to happen here? Are we going to sit at this? Is it going to become an eyesore? Or, you know, with the other three that are down there, we got a new one opening up? I don't know. I, I, I mean, the Chase Manhattan, excuse me, must have been a long planning, so that was probably coming, but I think we need, we've got to look at this, what's going to happen? I mean, what's going to happen to Bank of America here?
Well, yeah, see if, if I can, you know, address your concerns, and normally I don't for audience comments, but a, a city planner and I, and our recreational director rode around the other day and rode to the back of Wells Fargo, and we, we saw, you know, a couple items that he is going to bring onto our code enforcement, but that, unfortunately, that's the way, you know, the things are going. Everyone's, you know, 10 years ago who did online banking, so there's very, very few transactions that take place at the bank, and I remember the la, you know, when our former mayor tried to get Bank of America to stay, you know, and I had a meeting with her as well. They don't make any money when you bring them a $20 bill and say, you know, give me 21s. I mean, they needed, you know, things like the HOAs probably to put all of their money in there, that people take out loans and things like that, and unfortunately, the transactions that they get are just not money-making transactions. The city manager and I met, that was about six weeks ago, with Bank of America president from the southeast.
Yes, it was, Madam Mayor.
You know, we did, and, you know, we just expressed our concern about our older demographics, and, you know, they're, we're not the only branch that's closed. I think there's 12 in all of Volusia County that have not reopened again. He would not commit to us about, you know, what is going to happen. I can assure you, we will not let the property go down because of our court, code enforcement, but it is a sad, sad time, but it's unfortunately the way of the time. We just have to make sure, so everyone, you, when you go to Chase Bank, don't go with your $20 bill, you know, ta, do something, you know, either CDs or something that'll generate revenue. I appreciate your concern, I feel the same, oh, I feel the same way, I'm a Bank of America customer.
Chief of law.
Okay, we, we certainly will. Do I have any other audience comments? Even if you didn't fill out a form, we want to hear from you. Okay, if not, what do we have for next month's agenda? Oh, maybe, we, we don't have anything, and then all of a sudden, we end up with 10 items, but, okay, is there, if there's no other comment, thank you all for coming very much tonight. I'm hoping next month, we will have that live feed that you can watch on YouTube, so now the meeting is ended.